Hey, I'd like to call to order the June meeting of the Monroe County Public Library Board of Trustees. And so we'll start by going around and introducing ourselves. And if you have a book you'd like to share that you're reading, please feel free to do so. So Fred, how about we start with you?
I'm Fred Reisinger, and I have two biographies that I'm working through, one after the other. But I'm doing fine.
Jamie Burkhart, I just finished Children of Vengeance, I think it was called, and I picked up Firekeeper's Daughter.
I'm Greer Carson. I'm rereading Sam Harris's Letter to a Christian Nation and enjoying David Sedaris's new diaries, Carnival of Snackery. And my entire family is playing through Kirby and the Forgotten Land, which we have five copies out at the library, and they're all checked out, and the holds queue is nineteen people deep. So it's pretty popular.
I'm Chris Harrison, and I am reading The Swallowtail Legacy: Wreck at Ada's Reef by Michael D. Beall.
I'm David Ferguson, currently reading through Bottle of Lies, but I think I might have been on that last month, too. Very slowly going through it.
Kathy Loser, and I was lucky to get an advance copy of Ross Gay's new book, Inciting Joy.
All right, we're going to begin tonight with our consent agenda items. So do we have a motion to approve the minutes of last board meeting, the monthly financial report, the monthly bills for payment, personnel reports, and the 2022 board meeting calendar?
So moved.
Okay. Any questions or points of discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda items signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Okay, moving on, we will head to Greer for our director's monthly report.
So a few highlights to share with everyone. Our Library of Things collection continues to grow in popularity. It saw significant use in May. The iPads in particular are heavily used, and we've even heard some requests from the public specifically for additional iPads, so we are going to be pursuing that. Our outreach van service is back and using our brand-new van, which is great to see. Adult Services started a new program for adults sixteen over called the Golden Ager's Club, which focuses on physical movement, brain-boosting games, and crafts. And we're highlighting this because we often focus so many of our discussions in terms of programming on children and teens and trying to engage with new audiences and age groups. And it's important to remember that we create programming and opportunities for all age groups. Our youth starter card visits to first-grade classrooms occurred in May. Fifty-four of those students then returned to the library with parents or guardians to upgrade their cards, which is one of the main reasons why we do that program. During the first eight days of summer reading, which began on May 23rd, we distributed 1,281 summer reading program game boards. That's nearly 1,300 registered summer reading program patrons in just one week. And then there was a question at the last board meeting about how we handle training for things like Active Shooter, given everything that's going on in our country right now. And since then, we've been working to more or less overhaul our Active Shooter training plan, and we've adopted an annual training schedule by department and branch. So we will be doing real-time, location-specific Active Shooter training with all staff on an annual basis, and that began this week. Happy to answer any questions.
I really enjoyed the article today about the Weely Women. I guess you have a new collection or something called the Mobility Access Lending Library? I think that's exciting.
Yeah, Chris Jackson has been spearheading that, and that's kind of an interesting foray for us into something that could eventually be a things-type collection. There's a little more liability concern with that one, so we're proceeding very carefully. But it's a good opportunity.
It's nice to see the cooperation between the agencies.
Well, thank you very much, Greer, for that update. And we're going to go next to old business. And the first item there is updates from the Southwest Branch.
Okay, so kind of more of the same. The concrete wall framework installation and waterproofing work is nearly complete, but they're still working on that. We have confirmed plans to include a new type of glass partition on the south-facing wall, and there'll be a change order coming for that. It won't be significant, but it's well worth it. We have also confirmed plans to include a sliding metal gate to better secure the IT and electrical rooms. Then there'll be a related change order coming for that as well. We are in the process of resolving two temporary easements, one from Duke Electric and the other from the Highway Department, which we discussed last month. And the next construction meeting is tomorrow. We have these meetings on-site so we can view progress, ask questions about the structure, learn a little bit in the process. I, for one, learn a lot every time we have these construction meetings. So progress continues. We're very much on track for what we hope will be a May 2023 grand opening.
Any questions for Greer about the branch update? All right, seeing none. The next item on the agenda is an action item, and we had actually approved this at the last meeting, but we had some questions that came up. So Greer's going to give us an update on the Highway Department temporary easement before we actually sign the documents, just to answer a few questions that came up at the last meeting and make sure we're still all on board with the signing of that easement.
So we heard back from the Highway Department.
Let me go ahead and ask for a motion. Do I have a motion to approve any changes to the easement agreement?
So moved.
Okay, all right, thank you. Now go ahead, Greer.
So eager to talk about the Highway Department.
I know. Such an exciting topic.
So the real concern that we had was what happens if the roadway construction project impacts our property in any meaningful way? And then there was a follow-up question about what about access once the construction project really kicks off? So what we got back from the Highway Department was, first, that our planned amphitheater is located far enough outside of the limits of the temporary right-of-way and should not be impacted by the roadway construction. But when or where any direct damage is done to library property, that property will be restored to a condition similar to or equal to that existing before the damage was done, including repair, rebuilding, or otherwise restoring the property, all at the contractor's expense, not at the library's. The Gordon Pike roadway construction is slated to begin September of 2023 and will be phased so as not to impede access to the library. Now, it's slightly impeded because it will be a single lane, but they're not going to close off Gordon Pike for that part of the project. What they will have to do when they start to build the roundabout is close Gordon there, and they'll route all traffic to the library through the Bachelor New Access Road out to Rogers. It's not going to happen until the summer of 2025. So the plan from the Highway Department's perspective is to coordinate with the school to use that road for access to that part of the library and the school for twelve-month faculty and so on, and not to start that part of the project until 2025. So it's less than ideal, but so is completing a branch at the same time that the county's going to start a construction project. So we got that confirmation from them. We feel confident that that's about as good as it's going to get as far as this easement is concerned.
Are there any further questions or points of discussion?
Thank you for having me on.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So in order to sign, we'll go ahead and ask for a vote to approve the Highway Department temporary easement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. All right. Set to get that underway. And next, we have the actual opening day collection service agreement. So we have heard some updates on that, and now we're ready to approve that agreement. So if we have a motion for approving the agreement for the opening day collection?
So moved.
Okay, perfect. And go ahead, Greer, and update us on that.
The only update on that is that we had our legal team review the service agreements from both preferred vendors. We have no real concerns. We modified one of them to specify who the customer is, which is MCPL. But other than that, they look good, and they're in accordance with the proposals that we received as a result of the RFPs. So we're very comfortable signing these and pursuing and starting to buy materials for the Southwest Branch.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor of approving the master agreement for purchase and delivery of print library material and media for the Southwest Branch Library, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And the next item is, we've approved this a couple of times now since COVID came upon us, and so we are proposing to extend the COVID leave policy for another six months. So do I have a motion to go forward with the COVID leave policy?
So moved.
Okay, and Greer will update us on that, if there's any changes to it, or?
Sure. So just a little bit of background, we've had this in place since January of 2021. So this would be the fourth time we've asked to renew this. We do it in six-month intervals simply so we can maintain some flexibility, because the landscape of the pandemic can and does change. But this policy has provided all MCPL employees with ten full days of sick leave specific to COVID-related leave needs, and that includes being advised by a medical professional to self-quarantine due to COVID-related concerns, experiencing symptoms regarding COVID and seeking a diagnosis, or a bona fide need to care for an individual subject to quarantined regarding COVID. Our staff have actually made very responsible use of this. Just sort of some quick numbers. In 2021, we had twenty-three employees use the policy for a total of 433 hours of leave with an average of just under nineteen hours used per individuals. And in 2022, we have so far had twenty-four employees use this policy for a total of seven hundred and eight hours of leave with an average of just under thirty hours per individual. Now, these are unique individuals, so twenty-three and twenty-four unique employees respectively, which is a pretty good indication that it's being used. But really, more than anything, I think, not having to take your own sick leave for COVID-related issues, which could be repeating, and in some cases, that does happen. It's also kind of a safety net. It's a way for the library to say, we're going to take care of you in these unique times, and you're not going to have to worry about managing sick leave and personal leave on top of a COVID-related situation. So what we're recommending is that we renew it once again and that we reset the total number of leave days to ten beginning July 1st, and then that we revisit this again at the end of December.
So just to clarify, since the dates are crossed off, I want to make sure the effective date would be June 30th?
July 1st.
July 1st, okay, of 2022, and then it would be effective, it would end December 31st?
Correct. It would go through December 31st. So we would review it at the December board meeting, and it would renew on January 1st of '23.
Okay.
I'm glad to see that we're still doing this, because I think there's still a need.
Okay, all in favor of approving the temporary COVID emergency paid sick leave renewal? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Okay, the next is new business, and there's no action items, but Greer wants to bring forth a compensation philosophy discussion.
Yeah, so thinking back to the beginning of the year, we have so far reviewed our benefits package, which included an analysis of our health insurance plan, discussion over employee leave accruals, and some other related benefits, which are all pieces, in addition to wages, to our overall compensation package. We have also committed to conducting a salary study in 2022 to help us better understand the current market and where we fall within it. And this commitment, I think, does assume that we have some work to do, specific to competitive wages, particularly as it concerns the cost of living in our own community. Our next big step is to engage a consultant to help us develop and conduct the study. But before we do that, we need to think in terms of what type of employer we really want to be going forward. And that is, what are our goals for recruitment and retention of library employees, and how do those goals serve our mission? We think about these questions in terms of compensation philosophy. So tonight, we're sharing a draft statement that aims to articulate our current thinking about what such a philosophy statement should include. This is not yet a statement we're looking to formally adopt. Tonight, it's simply a guide to discussing the subject. And we're doing this prior to engaging a consultant, because we want this philosophy to help guide the work that they will do in conducting the study and to serve as a touchstone for the discussions that we will have among ourselves and with our staff in eventually determining what changes we might want to make. So in brief, our draft statement is a set of four commitments specific to compensation. The first is recruitment, which is attractive and competitive compensation to engage new employees as well as current employees seeking internal advancement. Retention, which is ensuring that cost of living needs are met for all full-time employees and ensuring that hourly wages, benefits, and additional perks of employment are in place for part-time employees. The next is education, helping our employees understand how compensation works, what their options are regarding benefits, and what a healthy work-life balance looks like. And the last is responsiveness, adopting an annual internal compensation review schedule to ensure that MCPL remains adaptive to changing economic factors and competitive within the local and peer organization market. So tonight, we invite discussion on the draft statement and on compensation philosophy in general, so that we can prepare for the next big step of engaging a consultant and launching the study, which will begin with a draft RFP we will bring to you all next month. And our colleagues from HR, Finance, and Administration, all of whom are working with us on this process, are here tonight to participate in the discussion as well.
So I have a question. Have you, are you thinking that the consulting firm is going to kind of neatly package up what they think the compensation packages should be for all levels of employees or just professional?
It would be for all employees at MCPL. And our hope would be to ask from a consultant to give us a set of recommendations based on the data. It doesn't mean we're going to take those recommendations and do them, but...
They'll be collecting or will be providing them?
Comparable work and compensation for that work, both within the public library field and with similar local competitors, which is kind of the tricky part, because we're the only public library in Bloomington.
So do you compare surrounding counties or?
We could, yeah, we could.
I'm trying to think, that might not be...
I don't know if we'd get to the cost of living in our community issue.
Bloomington's pretty expensive.
Yeah. Well, you know, we've looked at peer libraries, and when we did the last one about ten years ago, we pretty much looked at peer libraries to see how do we compete.
Like Tiducadeen County and...
Yeah. And we'll certainly do that, because that's an important part. But what's different about this one is that we really want to look at the local market, because the reality is people live in an expensive community, so.
I'm glad to hear that you're looking at the person who shelves the books, the person who is not in that professional status, because I think that's where the work gets done. I mean, I shouldn't say that. They need to be considered as well.
Absolutely. I have a question. So appreciate the philosophy and the goals here that you've mentioned, but what set of measures will allow us to know if we're meeting those?
That's a really good question. That's why we want to engage a consultant, somebody who does this work on a regular basis, so.
Because of looking at data, pulling in numbers from surrounding counties is a lot easier than saying, you know, how have we allowed opportunities to move forward, or how have we supported that healthy work-life balance? So just thinking about how we would measure that to know if we're meeting those goals.
So a lot of that is internal review work, you know? So it's not just the numbers in terms of compensation and benefits, but what are the processes that we have internally to, you know, facilitate opportunities for growth and so on? Some of that we started doing through continuous improvement, and it will continue. But that should definitely be a part of what we're asking someone for help to do. And it will be a result in part of conversations that we're going to have with staff through this process. The staff feedback part of the compensation study is going to be very important, but I can't say we know exactly what it looks like just yet. And then I think the consultants that we are hoping to engage are going to help advise on that, too.
Okay. Thank you.
And so number four, the library commits to an annual compensation review and assessment schedule to remain responsive to evolving economic factors. So I'm assuming this is going to be an ongoing process, looking at our budget to make sure any kind of compensation that we're offering our employees fits within our budget, so that that way we're not digging ourselves into any kind of financial holes, things like that.
Absolutely. So there's the sustainability piece that you're talking about, but it's also the acknowledgement that the economy is dynamic. And it could be that what we decide on going forward, whether we start in '23 or beyond that, is meaningful and sustainable for a couple of years, and then something changes, and we have to have the flexibility to take iterative looks at this. But that's not to say that we're going to engage an outside consultant every year. That process would be internal.
So that would maybe be part of the process, so built in, like some sort of a mechanism, I guess?
Yeah.
So like you said, we wouldn't have to be hiring consultants all the time?
Exactly.
But a mechanism to make those adjustments appropriately?
And reasonably, I think it would coincide with our July, start of our July budget season discussions. It would just be a larger part of that discussion than maybe it's been.
And the discussions will include all staff or a committee made up of representatives of staff?
That's a good question. In terms of annual iterative review, not sure. Yeah. But we do feel strongly that a commitment to iterative review is really key. This can't be something that we occasionally look at and say, we haven't done one in a while, so let's do it. We're in kind of a different time.
Just mentioned, we've talked through...
Yes, thank you.
And they're supportive, I'm assuming, or?
Yes. You know, we're certainly careful not to say, hey, we're doing salary studies so everyone can make more money. But I think there's a general understanding that that is something like an impetus for doing something like this, and that we want to do it together, and that we want to do it in a transparent fashion. So as Kyle said, yes, we've talked about it with union representatives, everyone on staff, and we talk about it at all staff meetings. Everyone knows we're doing this study, and everybody has also been reassured that they will have opportunities to participate in the process and provide feedback. And because it's like that, a lot like continuous improvement, it's going to be a big conversation and take a little bit of management, and ultimately going to be very, very healthy for us. But we can't say we know exactly how it's going to go, what it's going to look like.
Are there consulting firms that are locally based that could do this?
Can you speak to that a little bit?
I would say more regional. There's nobody, when we did our initial look, it seemed that it was more regional and within the state that has that capability.
And are there consultants that we look at, I guess, familiar with libraries and work with libraries, or are they...
Some of them are. And then we have others that have a broader view and being able to look at the Bloomington economy.
Would they also be, if they're looking broader, would they have more of a focus in non-for-profits? Or, okay.
We've also talked to some peer libraries who are doing their own compensation reviews right now, so just to get a sense for what that process is like.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you, Greer, for bringing that forth, and we'll look forward to some updates and as how that's progressing.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we would like to welcome Chris Hostler, the Ellisville Branch Library Manager, for an update on what's going on at Ellisville. And thank you so much for hosting us tonight. We appreciate your hospitality.
Yes, thank you for visiting us tonight for the meeting. I'd like to give you a brief recap tonight of the last few years, and I do mean brief, at the branch, and then speak about some of the new exciting initiatives we have in the works. So following an eight-month closure for renovation, we reopened the branch in late February of 2019, and we were open for just a bit over a year before the pandemic hit in March of 2020. And we followed the downtown library in the gradual reintroduction of services throughout the rest of the 2020 and 2021. This year, we returned exclusively to in-person programming with dedicated children, teen, and adult service librarians for the first time since the retirement of our previous adult services librarian in December of 2018. Our program attendance has gradually increased this year at Ellisville, especially since the early March dropping of the county-wide mask mandate. And our average attendance rose from eight per program in February to fifteen in May, so that's good to see. And it's been even more pronounced in our children's programs. Visitors to the branch similarly have rose after early March, reflecting that the Ellisville community is returning to the branch, many for the first time in over two years. I'd like to spotlight a few of our programs tonight that our community has been especially excited about here in Ellisville, beginning with Kim Baker, who is our children's librarian. Preschool Storytime, a discovery series, is Thursday mornings, and it is a combination of interactive stories and songs for children's between three and six years old, and is followed immediately by preschool discovery, which provides that same age group with multiple STEAM activities to work through each week. And the last few months, we're very excited to say we are seeing regular attendance upwards of sixty each week for those two programs, which is big for us here. Our teen librarian, Macklin, has asked me to talk about their teen artist club. This is a monthly hands-on guided craft that allows teens to have an instructional opportunity to work with different media each month with their peers, and recently has included pride pendants, needle felted animals, and later this month, we are making Stacy Tahrone is our new-ish adult librarian here at Ellisville. She actually started in 2020, I believe, and then started fully doing programming here after the pandemic moved along enough for us to be able to see people again. We had been without a branch adult services librarian after Luann Dillon retired in December of 2018. And from the moment Stacy has come on board, we have seen an increase both in attendance and diversity in the ages of attendees. Stacy's recent Stuff You Need to Know series of programs offered patrons in their mid-twenty's to late-seventies, presentations on beekeeping, weather safety with a NOAA meteorologist, and starting plants indoors. And I was very interested to hear you talk about the older age group of patrons. We've always had an issue with getting those twenty-to-fifty-year-old adults to come to programs here at Ellisville, so we're really excited to see that demographic start to show up here with Stacy's stuff, in addition to older folks, of course. We are also doing great with our summer reading program so far. We've given out nearly 450 children's game boards, ninety teen game boards, and dozens of our adult game boards in less than a month of the program. So that's a bit about the programs we have going on here. We are also excited about renewing some old partnerships in our community here at Ellisville that kind of fell to the wayside over the last two years and entering into some new ones. This was the first year in two years that we hosted United Way of Monroe County's Free Tax Help for the Low Income again, and that has been a great, great, widely appreciated service. Particularly this year, the Owen County, Spencer Owen County Library did not host that, so we picked up a lot of the slack for that. And in addition to providing the space, and the space you're sitting in right now for those appointments, our staff functioned as the intake phone line to set up those appointments. And so we'd go through all the different flow charts about income and qualifications and such, and then set those appointments up for the folks. And then also provided computers and technical help, and we did 180 of those in the two-and-a-half months of the tax season this year. Our partnership with Richland Bean Blossom School Corporation is back in force again. We met with the superintendent a couple months ago and the principal of the primary school to arrange for youth starter cards for all first graders. And that actually is on, the MOU is on the agenda for the Monday Richland Bean Blossom School Board meeting, and we fully expect that to be approved. We also are planning to bring back our annual first-grade tours of the branch, and that'll begin in October and probably run through right up to Thanksgiving. We're also going to do second graders this year, because they were first graders last year, and to get a chance to do that stuff, so we're going to double up and do two different grades on those. We also host the Richland Bean Blossom Food Truck in our back parking lot on weekdays, and that provides free meals to local youth during the summer and on school e-learning days. And the service coordinator for that program has reported that stop here at Ellisville Branch is their highest number of visitors out of all their stops, so we're happy to do that. Our partnerships addressing food insecurity in the Ellisville community are not limited to that school corporation either. This past fall, we began hosting the Monroe County Community Kitchen Food Truck on Tuesday and Thursday nights in our parking lot. And unlike the Richland Bean Blossom truck, they provide free meals to anybody of any age. We're also excited to contribute to the community with our branch garden, which, if you didn't see as you came in, it's right outside the windows there, so take a look when you leave. That garden began in 2019 with a community foundation and Archer grant to install four raised beds and purchase garden tools and a shed. And the first year, we did plant some basic crops of tomatoes, basils, and peppers. It kind of went into hiatus the two years of the pandemic, given our spotty actually being on-site to keep track of it, but it's returned in full force this year, and that's in large part due to receiving a grant, Growing Together grant, from the Purdue Extension. This grant matches the branch with staff from Purdue Extension Monroe County and the Monroe County Master Gardeners to provide nutritional and gardening programs, volunteer opportunities, and expert gardening knowledge. And in addition, we received $1,500 in funds that we have used to add two new raised beds, a produce processing station, soaker hoses, and a whole lot of other things. All of our crops this year were planted in consultation with our partners from the Purdue Extension and the Master Gardeners and Pantry 279, which is our local food pantry here in Ellisville connected with Hoosier Hills. in Ellisville connected with Hoosier Hills Food Bank. So we asked them, you know, what, what is most in demand, what crops are most in demand? And they came back and said tomatoes, carrots, onions, peppers, basil, cucumbers, zucchinis, green beans, and snow peas. And we're doing all of them. And we have, so we have an initial crop in the ground, and then we will do a late summer, early fall crop after we've harvested the first one. And all of that produce goes to Pantry 279, so happy to have that, that garden. It's a great opportunity for people in need of food to, for us to contribute to that, and to also have them come and learn about gardening and get some information to where they can garden for themselves as well, so. Looking to the future, the branch is excited about a reorganization project we have going on in our children's rooms, so in our pre-K and children's, school-aged children's room. We are moving parts of the collection from the school-aged room that fit better with the pre-K audience into that room. And then we're going to use the space that we free up in the school-aged room to create a tween area. We haven't really had something like that here in the way they have the downtown library, so that, that is one of our big projects this year. We also served as a focus group or on-focus groups and as a location for an interactive community input display as part of the envisioned Ellisville study that the town commissioned recently. The project brought Ellisville residents and stakeholders together to provide long-range planning input on the future of the town for the next 20 to 50 years. And in part, the study found that the majority of residents would like to see a revitalization of the downtown area here. And we feel we are well-placed physically and as a vital resource in this community to play a major role in that process. So it's a little recap about what has happened recently with us here at the branch and what's coming up. And at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This is our question. I enjoyed your presentation, and you're doing a great job, the whole, the whole library branch is, that's great.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
We appreciate your, appreciate all that you all are doing out here. All right, now we've reached the time for a public comment. Do we have any members of the public that would like to come forth and speak to the board? Anybody on Zoom, or if we had a Zoom? Nope.
No comment.
All right. Okay, seeing no public comment, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, we are adjourned.